Yep. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, because of all the evacuees. Yep. Alright, well, you guys have fun tonight. Hopefully I'm not here too late. Um, and you don't need to rush them because they don't have to wake up in the morning. ...
Commission meeting to order Wednesday, September 28th at 6:00. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Amanda Jackson Denmark.
Here.
Vice Chairman Charlie Whitmore.
Here.
Commissioner Kathleen Duncan.
Here.
Commissioner Rich Delpor.
Here.
Commissioner Jason Stewart. Commissioner Jim Flynn.
Yes.
Commissioner Lydia DePaul.
Here.
Notice regarding adjournment, the Planning Commission will not hear new items after 9:30 unless authorized by a majority vote of the commission members present. Items which have not been heard before 9:30 may be continued to the next regular meeting or a special meeting date as determined by the commission members. Notice regarding public comments, every member of the public who is recognized to speak shall address the chairman and in speaking, avoid disrespect to the commission, staff, or other members of the meeting. State your name and address when speaking for the record. Comments are limited to three minutes. Do we have any public comments?
We have a public comment for the agenda and for not on the agenda.
Okay. May I have an adoption of the agenda?
Second.
All in favor, or any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And we have several minutes for adoption, so we're gonna try and get them all done. Special meeting minutes for July the 20th, can I combine them? Okay. For July the 20th and July the 21st, there were, there are a few of us that can vote and some of us cannot, so the ones that can vote are myself, Charlie, Kathleen, Rich, and Lydia. So may I have a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have meeting minutes for July the 27th. The ones that can vote are myself, Charlie, Kathleen, Jason, and Lydia. Jason is not here, but we, that's enough for a quorum, so may I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes for August the 2nd, the ones that can vote are myself, Charlie, Kathleen, Jim, and Lydia, so that's. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
August the 4th and August the 10th meeting minutes, Charlie, Kathleen, Rich, Jim, and Lydia can vote. May I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Epstein. August the 24th, Amanda, me, Charlie, Rich, Jason, and Jim can vote. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so now we're, public comments. For those who have comments pertaining to the agenda item before the board this evening, you will have the opportunity to comment before the board votes on the item. You're welcome to hold your comments until then or voice your comment at this time, and you said we do have one public comment and that's not on the agenda. Okay, may we have that person?
Andrew Keel, 22, Trail Ridge Retreat, Bluffton, South Carolina, 29910. Anyhow, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the last Planning Commission meeting. I was out of town, however, midpoint master plan amendment was approved. Little disappointed, but I figured it would be. However, the things I did have an issue with with respect to that is, I was disappointed that there wasn't a condition, I don't think there was, there might have been anyway, about the traffic study, I would have liked that to be completed and see what the results are before things start moving forward, just in general in all these, because I mean, it's a major issue and it doesn't seem like they're ever done, along with a lot of the coverage letters. For example, Cypress are the amendment that's, or master plan amendment is coming up on here. I looked in the package and they have 2017 coverage letters again. So, you know, if we're gonna follow rules, let's not pick and choose, let's follow all the rules, make everybody comply. I mean, you know, one of the things I was a little disappointed with in the master plan approval of midpoint's amendment is, it was pointed out that the HOAs are agreements between HOAs and the developers in these newer developments they're getting added on to, you know, it's not the business of the town to get into those agreements. Well, you know, the town is the citizens' leverage, and the mission statement says we take care of our citizens, the towns, and each other. Well, you guys are the leverage, the town is the leverage. Just to give you an update, the HOA potential agreement that Pulte said they were gonna send to us, they haven't sent to us now and it's been two months. So, things get approved on a promise and then they don't happen, just like traffic studies. When's the traffic study for that, for midpoint gonna be completed? And then it also brought up the letter from the school district. Now, clearly, a lawyer drafted that because it was mildly ambiguous, but I think at the same time, they pretty much stated that the school district doesn't have any ability to support any new residential development that could increase the number of school-aged children. I mean, without saying, we're not gonna let them into the classrooms, that letter's pretty strong, that the schools can't support new development. So, my whole point is, if they haven't followed the rules, don't approve them, please. I'd just like to see that applied evenly and for everything. Thank you.
And just a reminder, you can go back online and see all of the meetings, and we did discuss some of those items. Thank you. Old business, Low Country Pickleball Court, a request by Richard Megan of Palmetto Land Associates for approval of a preliminary development plan. Project consists of the construction of a commercial pickleball facility, including restaurant, clubhouse, and covered courts. So Dan, would you please present?
This is the preliminary development plan for Low Country Pickleball. It's a request by the property owner, Rick Megan, of Palmetto Land Associates LLC, for approval of a preliminary development plan for a commercial pickleball facility. Property is located at 60 Estate Drive within the Palmetto Point Commercial Master Plan. This is an aerial showing the location of the subject property, just south of Giveitt Road on Okati Highway SC-170. Bluffton Explorer View of the same area. Application is for a preliminary development plan located within the Jones Estate PUD and is subject to the standard set forth in the Jones Estate Development Agreement and Concept Plan. Project consists of a 13,000 square foot restaurant, 30,000 square foot clubhouse with six indoor pickleball courts, and 19 outdoor pickleball courts with six of the outdoor courts being covered. Staff comments on the preliminary development plan were reviewed at the May 18, 2022 meeting of the DRC. Applicant provided a response to comments and updated the site development plans to address the comments. Subject property is also within the Highway Corridor Overlay District and will require a certificate of appropriateness reviewing landscaping, lighting, and architecture prior to final development plan approval. Previous Planning Commission meeting, this came before you, on July 27th, Planning Commission approved a motion to table the request to allow the applicant the opportunity to provide additional information. That was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting. The applicant submitted the additional information on September 1, 2022. The applicant addressed the required additional information as follows. Additional item one was to provide a parking exhibit that includes a proposed site plan layout and a parking table that calculates the required parking and provided parking. The applicant provided a parking exhibit that illustrates the parking by phase and includes a parking summary table showing required parking and provided parking. The applicant also provided a parking study that compares the parking proposed for the development to parking provided at currently operating similar sized pickleball and tennis facilities, and that was attachment nine of the PC pack. Additional item two, provide documentation showing ownership and easements for Highland Crossing Drive. The applicant provided the Palmetto Point Commercial Subdivision Platte that identifies Highland Crossing Drive as a private drive and shared access easement. The northern half of the drive is owned by Palmetto Point Business Park POA, and the southern half of the drive is owned by the villages at Palmetto Point HOA, and that was attachment 10 of the PC packet. The third and final additional item that was required was to provide information that addresses concerns about noise generated by the pickleball facilities, and here the applicant provided a noise concern memo dated August 9, 2022. Memo describes consultation with Mr. Charles Omira. He's the director of Pickleball Noise Abatement Acoustoblock, Inc. The consultant noted that distance building and landscaping will sufficiently buffer adjacent homes from noise generated by the pickleball facility. This is the site layout and the phasing plan, so it's the same layout that was submitted previously with the primary entrance coming in here, secondary entrance there. On Kane Drive, there's an entrance that accesses the parking. We had a discussion about tournaments and shuttle parking, and we've talked with the applicant. The applicant said they are open to providing shuttle parking and kind of a pullout area and felt that Kane Drive would be a good location for that area, so they are amenable to providing that.
Real quick, Dan?
Yes.
There is one change. Part of Phase Two's parking is now part of Phase One according to attachment nine?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
And that can be seen better on this? Well, no, actually, you're right. And the parking that you're talking about is in this area here. This was originally part of Phase Two out parcel, it is now incorporated into Phase One, and Phase One is the preliminary plan, development plan that you have in front of you now. This is the parking exhibit that was submitted, and it includes the development summary and the parking summary. Planning Commission shall consider the criteria set forth in section 310 3A of the UDO in assessing an application for a preliminary development plan. These are the review criteria. Planning Commission has the authority to take the following action. Can approve the application as submitted by the applicant. You can approve the application with conditions, can table the application, or deny the application as submitted by the applicant. Staff recommendation, town staff finds that the condition noted below, the requirements of section 310 3A of the UDO will be met, and recommends that the Planning Commission approve the application with the following conditions met prior to final development plan approval. That would be perimeter sidewalks connecting to the project's internal pedestrian circulation shall be provided along the Highland Crossing Drive and Estate Drive frontages adjacent to the subject property, and the installation of the sidewalks shall coincide with the phase development of the project. If you have any questions?
Carrie, do we have public comment on this?
Amanda, I need to recuse myself.
Kathleen is.
Yes, we do.
Okay, do you guys wanna hear the applicant first before we do public comments?
Sure.
Would the applicant like to speak?
I'm happy to take any questions, but I do wanna make one little bit of clarification on the phasing. Phase Two originally, I think it was, it's, Phase Two originally captured these parking spaces here. What we've done is carved out that, those parking spaces to accommodate the additional parking for the club, so that's all included in Phase One now, just to clarify. But I'm happy to take any questions if you have any. And one thing, other thing to note, I know it was mentioned at the last Planning Commission that we consider including the outdoor dining area, and we did add that to the calculation, that square footage to the calculation, and added that additional parking, and that's where, that's the main reason we carved out that, those spaces in Phase Two.
Thank you. Ready to public comment?
I wanna wait until after the public comment.
Oh, yes, yes, public comment.
Can you hear me?
Frickin' glass.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and do public comment then for this project.
Brian Fenkon?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Brian Fenlon. I reside at 1717 Promenade Lane in Bluffton, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the complex. I am currently the commissioner of the Low Country Pickleball Leagues, and I resumed or assumed that responsibility back in the fall of 2021. We started out with initially 475 participants, and I'm speaking on behalf of the population and growth of the sport. We're now up to approaching 1,500 participants in less than one year later. It happens to be the largest growing participation sport in the United States today for two years running. I'm in support of this particular complex, because I think it's gonna put Bluffton on a national map. And the reason I say that is in having conversations with some of the principals of the, of this particular project, they're in communication with USA Pickleball. USA Pickleball is a governing body of all pickleball within the United States, and USA Pickleball has made comment to the fact that they would plan on bringing a golden ticket event here. And for those of you who aren't familiar with pickleball, a goldeny ticket event is a national event. And if you think of sports on a national level in the Low Country area, the only other national event that takes place within the Low Country area is the RBC Heritage. Now, as I stated in my letter that I presented to the commission, it's a 54-plus-year tradition, but it started sometime, it started somewhere, and it started somehow. And my personal opinion is, with the advent and the growth of pickleball, this is something that is needed within this particular community. I just see nothing but growth for the town of Bluffton with bringing this particular complex to life here in Bluffton. So I'm speaking on behalf of this particular project, and I hope that the committee sees I'm speaking on behalf of this particular project, and I hope that the committee sees fit to approve this much-needed complex, not only for the members and the kids in Bluffton, because they don't really have a place to play that's as organized as this is. I speak on behalf for bringing national prominence to the town of Bluffton through the sports of pickleball. And I don't know if you're seeing the recent news today, but we all know who LeBron James is, and he just sunk a lot of change into investing into pickleball himself. So it's just a growing sport. I think we're on the cutting edge of it, and I think it would be worthwhile project for Bluffton to consider and approve. Thank you for your time.
Brian, question? The golden event that you talk about.
Golden ticket.
Golden ticket. Would that be comparable to what recently got held in Cincinnati, Ohio at the Linder Center?
Yes.
And how many people would typically that involve?
I can't tell you factually how many people were there. Obviously, there would be limits based upon capacity here. I don't know what those limits are. How many teams would register? How many teams are permitted to register? There's cutoffs with every tournament. There's a maximum and a minimum level before a tournament can be hosted. So the principals who are planning this project would probably be able to better answer that question with respect to population and how many teams may register.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
So do you want to go ahead and start since you kind of started the conversation?
No, good. The only, there's only one question I have. The parking, I love this exhibit that's up right now, and I think it talks about 242 spaces for parking for Phase 1, which is great. There was another exhibit that said 220, but I'm led to understand that this is the correct number. Am I also to understand that it is very unlikely that the future development of those other Phase 2, Phase 3 could be or would be restaurants? Because that would require more parking based on the 12 spots per thousand, and that's probably for the applicant.
And you thought we were going to let you sit?
Just to clarify, we're providing 251.
Hi, I'm Rick Magan, one of the owners of the project. I'd say your assumption is probably right, but it really depends on the rest of the tenant mix that we go with for the rest of the projects. Some uses require less parking than retail. Medical is a possibility as well. Carryouts are another possibility as opposed to sit-down dining restaurants. So it really depends. We're very aware of the total parking that we have on the site, and we'll work within that mix. But we also believe that timing of the use of the different facilities is important too. Because, for instance, in the early morning, that's probably one of the busiest times for the pickleball facility, and odds are the restaurant adjoining the facility will not be open. None of those parking spaces that are allotted for the restaurant will be used. So it could be that an alternate use that sort of works within that timing might make a lot of sense. Normally, the pickleball club is busiest in the early morning and then late afternoon, early evening. So some of those times work well with a restaurant, some don't work so well with the restaurant. But we also, in projects we've built in the past, typically have a discount for shared parking. For instance, any normal retail center that you have, you'll have uses that are scheduled for their busy time differently than the other uses. So we'll work with the Planning Commission and make sure we have a group of tenants that are complementary to each other and that work within the parking that we have allotted.
Thank you.
And then Kevin, just when the other parcels may come in Phase 2 and 3, they still have to come through a development plan and make sure that the buildings and the parking all work.
Yes, correct.
So it's not that they're just going to get built and use these parking spaces. If they don't meet that criteria, then they can't.
It'll be back in front of you.
Yeah.
And just so, just to compare, you know, those future phases are parked at five spaces per thousand square feet. Currently, in the rest of the town outside of the Jones Estate, it's only four per thousand. So we still exceed any restaurant as required within any other areas of town.
If I could add, and maybe this might help ease some of the concerns that you have, one of the things that you could potentially do is make a condition during the, at the time of the covenants and restrictions that are starting to be created for this site, that there's unrestricted parking associated with it, and what that'll do is it prevents any one person from restricting any single parking space.
All shared.
So it's all, in essence, all shared, yes. And no other, if an independent use comes in and then stakes claim to a parking space and someone parks there and they get the car towed, if that's a concern.
Just to clarifying, so let's say Phase 2 comes in as a 5,000 square foot restaurant. There would be the, fortunately, unfortunately, whichever, there would be the 12 spaces per thousand square foot if it was a restaurant use, and you'd have to carve that out of whatever is left. It wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to count spots from this phase towards that, correct? Kevin?
Oh, you're asking me that question? Okay.
I want staff to tell me, not the developer. Once these are assigned to Phase 1, even though they may be shared.
They'll all be shared throughout, yes.
Still have to carve out that many more spots.
Still have to meet your requirements. You're still unknown at this point, so it might be if another restaurant came in, then the size of it might have to be reduced in order to make sure that everything would fit.
Or, yeah, yeah. And it's something that would be addressed at the time that.
Yes. It'll come back in front of you.
You guys know the concerns about the shuttle. We don't, I don't think, and I'm not going to talk for everyone else, I'll talk for myself, I don't think I was ever looking for a plan of we're going to get space at the county site at Buckwalter, and we're going to run this size shuttle to here or anything else like that. I think the only thing myself and some of the others were looking for is just a delineation on the map where there would be a shuttle drop-off. Because we hear, we hear you talking about wanting to have two national tournaments. We hear the gentleman that was up here before talking about we want tournaments, and I'm not opposed to that at all. I think it'd be good. It'd be good for the economic development of the town and the county as a whole. It'll bring more business to restaurants and retail in the area. The concern was just that there is somewhere delineated on that for a shuttle dive-in and drop people off. And from what Dan said, I just want to hear from y'all. Y'all are okay with us making that a condition of approval, that that be put on the plan?
Yes.
And I think the area that was pointed to on Kane Drive would be an area, even possibly someplace on Estate Drive. I think that'd be great, because what that would do would be to allow the circulation around the perimeter of the site, but not necessarily take the shuttle buses through the site. Create a traffic night. And I have, by the way, I've talked to the police department, and they're on board with working with us. They say, as we suspected, a special event permit is required, so when the time comes, they're happy to work with us.
Now, see, that I didn't know. I think that's, I think in my mind, you've addressed everything that we asked you to address.
Well, then, if everybody's comfortable, can I have a motion?
And there's a opposed motion that includes the one condition.
Yeah, I'd be happy to make the motion that we talked about unrestricted parking and we talked about the shuttle bump out. So I would recommend, make a motion that we approve the application with the following three conditions met prior to final development plan approval. Number one, perimeter sidewalks connecting to the project's internal pedestrian circulation shall be provided along the Highland Crossing Drive and Estate Drive frontages adjacent to the subject property. Installation of the sidewalks shall coincide with the phase development of the project. Number two, that in this phase, and I don't know if I can require in future phases, in future phases, the parking assigned would be unrestricted to any phase in the development, shared throughout the development. And number three, that the developer provide a shuttle drop-off, bump out, for lack of another word, for shuttles to dive into off of any of the frontage roads for potential future tournaments.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Second one for old business is the May River Montessori Preliminary Development Plan. The applicant Ward Edwards Engineering is requesting approval of a preliminary development plan. The project proposes to construct a new classroom building on the lot adjacent to the May River Montessori main facility. Dan, please.
Preliminary development plan for May River Montessori. Ward Edwards Engineering, on behalf of the property owner, May River Montessori, is requesting approval of a preliminary development plan. Project proposes the construction of a new classroom building at 58 Calhoun Street adjacent to the May River Montessori main facility. The location on an aerial map, the location as it's shown in Bluffton Explorer, project description and background. Application is for preliminary development plan located within the Neighborhood Center Historic District, and is subject to the standard set forth in the town of Bluffton UDO. Subject parcel is located between Bridge Street and Lawrence Road with access to the parcel from Calhoun Street. Project consists of a, of one two-story classroom building totaling 4,996 square feet and containing one classroom space on each floor. Staff comments on the preliminary development plan were reviewed at the May 11, 2022 meeting of the DRC. Applicant provided a response to comments and updated exhibits to address the comments provided. Due to the project being within a historic district, the plan will be required to go through the Certificate of Appropriateness process. This was also before Planning Commission previously. At the June 22, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, applicant requested to withdraw the project to provide additional information as requested by Commission members. Staff's recommended condition of approval. The applicant provided a revised, a revised resubmital package on July 28, 2022 addressing the required additional information and staff recommended conditions of approval as follows. Additional item one, provide a traffic memo, parking exhibit, and traffic circulation exhibit. The applicant provided a traffic memo, parking exhibit, and traffic circulation exhibit. This was included as Attachment 9 in the package. Additional item two, resolve whether the proposed building will be a Main Street building type or civic building type, and if necessary, revise the submittal plans to meet the building type requirement. Here, the applicant has reduced the building size to conform with the Main Street building type requirements. The maximum footprint for a Main Street building in the NCE HD district is 2,500 square feet, and the proposed building now has a 2,498 square foot footprint. Site development landscape plans have been revised accordingly. Additional item three, provide an arborist report. The applicant has provided an arborist report dated July 24, 2022. That's Attachment 10 in the PC packet. Additional item four was to address the staff recommended conditions of approval for Section 537A1 of the UDO. Provide large canopy street trees planted no greater than 50 feet apart along the Calhoun Street frontage. And per Section 537E of the UDO, provide foundation planting area at least eight feet wide around all structures. The applicant has provided large canopy street trees in accordance with UDO Section 537A1, and the applicant has provided foundation planting in accordance with UDO Section 537E. The site layout plan, building size and footprint have been reduced to meet the requirements for a Main Street building type. A Certificate of Appropriateness HD must be approved prior to issuance of building permits for the structure, and that's per UDO Section 318. This is the revised landscape plan. Landscape plan provides a large canopy street trees planted no greater than 50 feet apart along Calhoun Street. That is these three trees here. And that is per UDO Section 537A1. The landscape plan provides a foundation planting area that is predominantly eight feet in width around the proposed building. One area where it is not eight feet in width is along the northern, northern side of the building, and there's plantings on the other side of the sidewalk that's provided. I think both of those planting areas combined comes to 12, 12 to 14 feet. Traffic memo and parking. There was discussion about, about a traffic circulation at the previous Planning Commission meeting. According to May River Montessori, the proposed development will add two additional instructors, and that'll amount to 34 total employees, faculty, and approximately 30 additional students with this building. Traffic memo prepared by StanTech concludes that as a result of the proposed development, and this is in quotes, "The total existing traffic process through the Lawrence Street and Calhoun Street intersection is projected to increase by less than 1%. And the total existing traffic through the Bridge Street and Calhoun Street intersection is projected to increase by approximately 6%." A parking exhibit provided with the resubmittal shows 34 onsite or adjacent parking spaces and is compliant with current ADA requirements. Review criteria, shall consider the criteria set forth in Section 310 3A of the UDO. These are the review criteria. Planning Commission action, Planning Commission has the authority to take the following action. You can approve the application as submitted by the applicant. You can approve the application with conditions. You can table the application, or you can deny the application as submitted by the applicant. Staff recommendation, staff finds that the conditions noted below, the requirements of the section, of Section 310 3A of the UDO will be met, and recommends the Planning Commission approve the application with the following condition met prior to final development plan approval. And that's as the site is located within the Neighborhood Center HD zoning district, a Certificate of Appropriateness HD must be approved prior to issuance of building permits for the structure per Section 318 of the UDO. And open it up for questions.
Do we have any comments on this project? Okay. The applicant want to speak?
Good evening, y'all. It's Connor Belaney with Ward Edwards Engineering. Good to be back here. As Dan outlined, we've made adjustments to the plan, and we've provided additional documentation to what we believe is a more refined plan that we're excited about. We have a team of people here in support of this project that also represent all the different design components that went into this project, including myself on behalf of the civil engineering team. We also have representatives from the landscape architecture team, the architecture team, the traffic engineering team, and the school. So we're happy to answer any questions and happy to be here.
Charlie, do you want to start?
We'll see.
No, I think after our meeting yesterday with staff, a lot of the questions that I had, and I guess what brought up was the landscaping on that eight-foot section that you were talking about, Dan. So I mean, I think I'm happy with that part of it. And the parking was going to be the biggest issue as far as circulation.
I don't have any comments other than I'd just like to make sure the arborist report recommendations are followed for construction.
One comment to Lydia's comment. I appreciate her bringing up the arborist recommendation. I appreciate her bringing up the arborist recommendations. I think that, given the, what our purview is, I don't think we can make a condition that they have to follow those recommendations that were provided by the arborists, but I think we can ask that the applicant does follow the recommendations. And then, another question I had was, on the landscape plan, I can see an eight-foot setback line on the building from the street, but I'm slightly confused because the building is over that line. Is it an eight-foot setback, building setback line? Am I mistaken?
There, there's a build-two zone, zero to 10 feet.
Is this?
It's a Main Street building. So, that's a zero to 10-foot.
Got it.
Build-two zone.
All right. And the other thing that that bring, secondarily brings up is that clearly it's in front of that eight-foot line, and we've talked, I know we talked yesterday about the eight-foot foundation planting not being on the side, which, as you pointed out, on the other side of the sidewalk, you could, you're going to count that, but still on the front of this building, we're looking at probably close to six foot between the sidewalk, or the property line, excuse me, and that, that face of the building for a portion of it.
What's the concern?
I know we've made adjustments on the building location such that we should have eight feet of a foundation buffer along the entire frontage. I can open it up to the landscape architect to hopefully speak further on that. Backtracking one step, though, I will say on our tree preservation plan, we do reference the arborist report, and we have full intentions on adhering to that report.
So, you'll be doing the peered foundation on the backside adjacent to the live oak? That was one of the recommendations in the arborist.
If that was in the arborist report. Adhering to that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, you can clearly see on the landscape plan that eight-foot setback, and you can see the building in front of it. So, I don't know if you've adjusted it since that landscape plan.
Can you switch it to the landscape plan? Or Dan, the landscape plan? Restate it with, now that we're all looking at it.
So, you can see where that eight-foot setback line is. It's the dashed line that's running where the front door is on Calhoun Street. It's just behind there, and then that building actually, as you move south, even comes out any further, comes out further. So, that's where it then pinches down to probably about six feet.
Right.
If we don't have eight feet, the intention is to have eight feet there, and we, we would accommodate, if that were a condition, to shift that back another foot or two to adhere eight feet along the entire frontage.
Okay. It's just that, it, it's not that I don't, that I can't see that you're trying to beef up that front foundation. It's that, it's a rule written in the UDO, and I don't think we can go against a rule that's in the UDO. And I understand.
And we'll verify that. The final landscape plan is, will be provided at all development plans of metal, and we'll actually know that happens at that time.
I mean, that's not just landscape. That's a site plan issue. And they, and that eight-foot isn't, I mean, they don't have to show that eight-foot, I don't suppose, on the, on their other site plans. It's only because it was shown on this landscape plan that I caught that eight-foot setback.
Just a point of clarity. I believe, James, I, of course, I know. I believe it's showing, it's mislabeled, that that's actually the 10-foot line.
Oh.
That's, we have to build, put the building within ten feet of the proper, I don't know how the town.
Face of the, the main face of the building.
We have a zero to 10 front setback line, and you can put the building five feet from the proper line. I'm not sure how you achieve a 10, or eight-foot foundation buffer.
This is another UDO edit.
Get some clarification from the town on how to deal with that. And just as a point of reference, on the north side, and I appreciate Dan, but there's an existing set of stairs and an existing, not historic, but an existing wall from the previous home that was there eons ago. So, we wanted to preserve that, and so that's why the, in between the service yard and that existing portion of the wall is less than, and then we make.
I'll call you on the other side.
Gotcha. Okay. And then, one other question I have, I can, I saw where that, I appreciate the diagram showing where the handicap parking or accessible parking is in relationship to this building. One of the things that I wondered was, what is the parking surface that is on the adjacent parcel that they're going to be coming across?
So, the ADA parking is concrete. There's a strip of existing concrete that leads to the bridge. It does not connect to the bridge. However, the paving plans have been updated to ensure it's ADA compliant and extend the concrete all the way to the bridge. And then, the design past that has always been ADA compliant.
Okay. So, we just need to make sure that we get that in the final.
It should be in the paving plans that have been updated.
Okay. I may have missed it. That's entirely possible. That was, I think that was, that's it. All mine.
Just, just a question. Something came up when you were saying it's this, the number of students. And this building is roughly 5,000 square feet with two floors. And you're, and we had a little bit of a discussion yesterday, is that, is it 30 students per floor or 30 for the whole building? I think we understood it was 30 for the whole building. But in the prose tonight, I saw approximately 30. So, I'm curious, how, what's the upper end of limit of additional students that the school would consider if it's approximately 30? How, how high could it go?
The school can, having kids have gone through May River Montessori, it's not your typical classroom. The educational is very interactive, and there's a lot of stations set within the classroom, so it's not a, lines of chairs in a lecture-style format. And just for clarity, currently, the preschool kids are in the cottage in a, in a building in the back, and those students are moving to the front, and then that's going to become a multipurpose room and rainy day cafeteria for the kids. So, it's, it's taking out the class, so that, the classroom's relocating, and then the new classroom on the second floor is really the new student population. But I, you couldn't, I mean, in a Montessori training, you couldn't fit 50 kids in that classroom. They would lose the element of what Montessori education is.
Okay. Thank you.
So, going back to the parking, and this is just a comment as far as when you do the development plan or deed restrictions, or however that is, there needs to be language in there that says that that parcel's parking, if there's shared parking between the two, so that if that parcel ever got sold off, they know they still have the parking counts for the other pieces.
That, that will be picked up during the final development plan?
Yeah. Just a comment. Wanted it out loud.
Yeah. The only question I had that I wanted to hear from y'all, you just addressed, and that is that it's, it's really two classrooms. One's relocating. Where is it coming from? You just answered that. And then, so we're looking at 30, 35 additional children, little additional traffic. I will say, the traffic frustrates me, but it's already there, and this doesn't seem like it's going to add that much to it. So, yeah, just that comment.
Well, can I, one, one, just a question, and maybe you can answer it. How many square feet is the existing school building for the 200 kids?
Ooh. That's a great question. I have it on my CAD plan at the office. There are.
Not enough, though.
More than one building.
Four, six. Eight, 10, 12? 10, 12 classrooms? Nine classrooms? Nine?
Hey, no fair cheating.
Nine, nine missing classes.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I get someone to entertain a motion? Oh, may I entertain? There's a suggestion on the screen.
You don't have to require it.
I'm checking.
Oh, God.
Because, no, I'm trying, I'm trying.
Kidding.
It's a rarity, but.
You haven't spoken.
Because they, pardon?
You haven't spoken all night.
I know. I was getting itchy, so I needed to say something. Because the applicant has said that they're going to adopt the arborist recommendations, I feel very comfortable with y'all, including it as part of your conditions. They've been on the record about accepting them, so any challenges would have to come up.
I would like to make a motion to approve the preliminary development plan with the conditions noted by staff, as well as the condition that construction will comply with the recommendations in the arborist report.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Now, we are on to new business. New Riverside Parcel 9. It's a master plan amendment. Request by John Paul Moore of Thomason Hutton on behalf of Pritchard Farm LLC for an approval of a master plan amendment application. The applicant proposes to amend the New Riverside Parcel 9 master plan to add an additional 144 residential lots, resulting in the total of 509 maximum allowed residential lots. The amended master plan will include the original master plan properties and an approximately 49-acre portion of tax map number in your package. Okay. Dan?
Master plan amendment for New Riverside Parcel 9. This is aerial location. It is north of New Riverside Road, just east of May River High School. Broken Explorer view. Project requested change. The applicant, John Paul Moore of Thomason Hutton with authorization, property owner, Pritchard Farm LLC, is requesting approval for an amendment to the master plan for New Riverside Parcel 9 in the New Riverside Plan Unit Development. More specifically, the amendment requests an additional 144 residential lots to be added to the currently approved master plan allowance of 365 residential lots. That'd bring the maximum allowed number of lots to a total of 509. This is the existing master plan. This is the proposed master plan, and this is, this shows both on the same screens that it's easier to see the difference with the additional 144 lots are included here and here with an extension of this previously approved road out to here and this, and road out to here and cul-de-sacs going east and west. This is the proposed phasing plan. They are currently at phase three, if you can see that on the slide. Construction is ongoing on phase three at this time. Part of this, this additional lots would be in phase five and the remainder in phase six. The review criteria highlighted number five. And number five is building to be served by adequate public services, including but not limited to water, sanitary sewer, roads, police, and school services. For developments that have the potential for significant impact on infrastructure and services, services applicant shall be required to provide an analysis and mitigation of the impact on transportation utilities and community services. We did, staff did have one concern, and it was about the adequate emergency vehicle access, and the applicant has agreed to provide a second access point to the northern cul-de-sac parcels. The second access point can be in the form of a grassy emergency vehicle access. Have a photo here. This is actually Vineyard Bluffton Assistant Living at 25 Cassidy Drive, and this here is the grass axi-access point, something very similar to this is what we're, what we're referring to. And I will just jump back real quick, and what we're hoping, the, what we're suggesting is, is that access point be located right here. Master plan amendment review process. The pre-application meeting took place in June of 2022. Applicant check-in meeting took place on July 15th of 2022. There's a review by the Development Review Committee on August 17th. We're here tonight with the Planning Commission recommendation September 28th of 2022. This, you are making a recommendation to town council, and then town council will take it under consideration for approval at a time to be determined. Planning Commission actions for consideration. Recommend approval of the application as submitted by the applicant. Recommend approval of the application with conditions, or recommend denial of the application as submitted by the applicant. Town staff recommendation is approval with conditions. Town staff finds that the requirements of section 393 of the UDO can be met with the following condition, and recommends that the Planning Commission provide a recommendation of conditional approval to town council for the New Riverside Parcel 9 master plan amendment. And that condition is to update the plan in narrative to show a second access point to the northern cul-de-sac parcels. The second access point can be in the form of a grass emergency vehicle access. Open it up for questions.
Do we have any public comments on this one? Okay. Does the applicant want to speak?
John Paul Moore with Thomason Hutton. Couple of, I guess, clarifications to talk about real quick. So, we did agree that, we talked to Dan about the emergency access. The one thing that we wanted to talk to specifically, I don't want to do this to him. So, that, that'll essentially connect from this cul-de-sac down to this road here. What, we drew this plan fairly tight, to be honest, to, to keep the acreage down as much as we could for that 144 units. So, when we do this, we're going to lose two lots, maybe three. We will, as long as approved tonight with this condition, we will increase the acreage slightly to bump this line north, but the number of units will stay the same. That way, we're sure we can fit, we can fit the 144 units within the master plan boundary, if that makes sense. Any any question with that?
If I'm moving the boundary line, what are you?
Moving the IMP line, so that they, Pritchard Farm owns all of this property. We're going to essentially push this north and extend this hammerhead north to fit, that way we have room to fit two or three additional lots, or not additional, but to replace the ones that we're going to lose. Does that make sense?
And the theory is, you're going to come back at some point in the future with another master plan amendment for more lots?
Well, all they have is 144 units right now. They don't have any more units. Certainly, if, if, there's not many more units in New Riverside PUD, Kevin can speak to that, but it would be pop, potential if more units were available and they got acquired.
Correct. And not to go into deep detail, but there's a maximum allotment on parcel nine, and it's 700 and something. I just don't have the exact number, so obviously, they're nowhere close to that. So, from a staff level, we don't have any issue with that line being readjusted, and what we can do is make sure prior to, prior to this going to town council, we'll get the updated documentation, so that way council will see what you guys approve conditionally, if you approve conditionally.
Does that need to be in part of our recommendation?
I would, I would say yes, it would, and, and what we can do is just to, it, it just makes it very clear as to what's happening.
Any questions or concerns about that?
I have questions. Not about that.
Go ahead.
Um, one question I had, I saw in the old master plan, they had 30-foot and 40-foot lots. Is that the intent still with this plan as well, or?
I almost went into that, but thank you for asking. So, the, and one reason, the colors are different, right, between the original master plan and this master plan? So, the original contemplated sub-40-foot lots between 30 and 40 feet. Market conditions has not driven them that direction. There, there are no 30-foot lots in, on, in the existing plan, so we actually pulled that out and said, no, everything's going to be 40-foot and above.
Are you doing, I saw in the street section, 50-foot right-of-way and 60-foot right-of-way. Where are, where's the 60-foot right-of-way, and where's, or is it all 50-foot right-of-way?
The, the 60-foot right-of-way, I believe, was for the, it was for the 30-foot wide lot. So, I think we pulled that section, I thought we did, out of the.
You did. Yeah. The intent was, during the initial master plan, they had, if they were doing these smaller lots, that they needed to, to increase the road width to allow for some of the on-street parking to happen as well. But with the larger lots, they were able to get the parking that they needed on the lot, on the lot, as opposed to being able to on-lot and on-street.
And to go into that a little bit more, the roads out here, we did 25-foot wide asphalt to, and I think that's shown in the section. That way, we can have that on-street parking accommodated.
Is that on-street parking going to be overnight parking, or is that just, will it happen overnight or just be during the day?
Yeah, it's not being regulated. I don't know if the HOA ever would consider regulating it, but.
And that's not something that we regulate, so.
I mean, are they going to, are they going to stripe that? One of the things, the reason I ask, and part of the reason I ask is I've got, I live in Bluffton Park, so until they striped it and restripped it, we had people parking everywhere, and I can see that being problematic. And it became problematic because you couldn't fit buses through and you couldn't fit fire trucks through. And it's in their narrow right-of-way, so there was just enough room for parking on one side only. So, that's, it becomes a health safety welfare issue, and that's why I drove it home so prominently in my neighborhood and why I'm concerned about it here. So, I would, I would ask that you consider trying to address that on the front end rather than letting that become a problem on the back end. The other question I had, or one of the concerns I have is just the lack of, there's, you've provided, on the first few phases, there's great park space, there's a little linear access trail, but if you live up in this new portion, you have just basically no access to these parks. I mean, you're sending your kid pretty far down the street to get to a park. And I can see where you potentially have an opportunity on that right-hand side, but I'd love to see that potentially designated as a park. And then, the other thought I had was with that on-street parking and just knowing, again, living in Bluffton Park and the way people live, there's lots and lots of cars. And so, there's always parking issues, and just having a place around these parks to have extra parking might be beneficial as well. And I wouldn't say it's a condition, I would say it's a recommendation to consider it. Do, is, where's the mail kiosk going on this? I assume it's, they're doing a mail kiosk?
I'm trying to remember. I think they're doing it at the amenity.
I don't know, but we will make sure that during development plan is picked up.
Yeah, the, we, Bluffton Postmaster's very involved, so we, we, we have, we all have to keep, keep them happy.
Oh, and then, back to Mr. Keel's comments earlier about the 2017 service letters. And I, I don't have those in my printouts, and I couldn't pull up the PDF. I had not been paying attention to the dates on those. Has the staff looked at those service letters to confirm their current?
Yeah, we did not update the, we can before, if y'all want to make that a recommendation, we can certainly reach out and get those updated before Council.
I think just to be consistent with, you know, midpoint, we asked them also to do that, so I think.
We absolutely can do that.
I'd like to see that.
Remember, they may have even had the old, larger unit count on the letters, but we can certainly update them to be consistent.
That's all I have.
Yeah, and building on what you were just saying, this is probably more of a question for, for Kevin. We heard in midpoint that the school system felt like they couldn't accommodate it. Now, that was like 400 or 500. This is an additional 150 or so. Is there not an issue with the school system for this development as it was in midpoint? Or how do, why is it different?
Well, I'll, I'll defer to chairman.
Okay, so, basically, with all of these master plans, they've all been planned for years ago. So, all of those numbers have been accounted for already. So, this isn't anything new in the count.
Was midpoint?
No, it's already been planned.
Midpoint was actually a reduction.
But midpoint, my point was midpoint made a big deal of, we can't do this.
We talked about this the last Planning Commission meeting, and the Beaufort County school system has not updated any, I mean, they, on their part, have not updated any information in regards to that. So, they gave us information, they're on the projected path that they said they would be on for their school system. We can't control that, but this has already been projected and planned. This is not a new, even though it says amendment, it's not a new development. This has already been master planned.
If I may, and I'll just kind of summarize a little bit about what, what we talked about at the last meeting. So, taking New Riverside in particular, the New Riverside Development Agreement was approved in, I think, 2004, 2005. At that time, there was a specific number of units allocated that could be developed, residential units. And then, there were also additional units that could be created through a conversion of commercial space. At that point, before the development agreement could be approved, the school district had to sign off on it, and they said, you know, they had the ability to.
Accommodate?
Accommodate all of the students that they anticipated based on the residential development. Now, to, within the school district, to a certain degree, in 2006, the funding mechanisms changed, or shortly thereafter, the funding mechanisms changed by order of the state government. And so, the funding for the school district became substantially reduced. And that has created a number of issues for Beaufort County that is just really outside of their ability to control. So, as these projects have gone along, there have been approvals that have been granted. There are, you know, when the owner of parcel nine, Pritchard Farm, has that land out there or sells it to a developer, they're selling not just the dirt, but also these development rights that have been based off of the approvals that were granted by the Town Council with the development agreement, but also, you know, in theory approved by the school district that they could accommodate this many people. As part of that, you know, there were these planning schedules, and it appears that things are keeping pace with the planning schedule set forth in the development agreement. It has been a more uneven pace than I think was anticipated when the development agreement was originally entered into. There was a lull there for a good bit, and now it's picked up tremendously. There are, I mean, there are issues with the school district telling us with their more recent communications that they're not going to be able, they haven't said that they can accommodate because they're obligated by law to do so, but they are being very clear about the kind of constraints that it's putting on, on the system. So, without giving you a direct answer as to, you know, what is the impact of these letters, because we don't have one that I can tell in this application.
We do.
An updated one.
Five years ago.
Yeah, okay.
Eight, five years is not a, it's not 20 years like the list. And I'd like to make a comment after your done.
So, I think it's, it's one of those, you know, it's one of those problematic issues that we're going to have to figure out a way to address. But I echo what the chairwoman said, and I think it's also in this particular development, some of the infrastructure that was put into place by parcel nine to support the development of May River High School, I think they gave an access road to help, help support that, so.
And just, just to add to it, the reason I didn't really have, because we asked for the school letter on the last one, the reason I didn't have that concern on this one is we did have the one from five years ago, and the one from five years ago written by the former superintendent states, "The developers of parcel nine, town of Bluffton and Crescent Communities have also worked with BCSD in order to ensure that BCSD will have the infrastructure required to meet capacity needs for the rapidly growing student population of Beaufort County and the New Riverside Community." And then, it talks about the additional entrance, but that coming from a former superintendent. Wait for me.
So, I guess we would have more of a problem if there was a brand-new development that has never been master planned. That would be more of an issue because we're, it wasn't in that hole, planning some numbers.
I have a question, and it, I almost hesitate to ask for it. I mean, I, I do think that we need, I think it would be, I think we should have updated service letters. And I, and I actually would like to see from the school as well. And the reason I would like to see it from the school as well is I would like there to be a continued reinforcement of the need to address the school facilities, community facilities, specific to this education, just as a part of record, so that we can say, look, all of these developments that are coming up, the school is coming in the stand, 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 we will serve this, this, but we have a concern. Is, am I stepping in some dangerous waters here?
But you're going to get the same letter that we got last time, and it's going to say the exact same thing.
Yep, and I, but I want that to be there as a matter of record, is that?
So, from a, from a legal standpoint, it's whether it is, whether it's going to be instructive to your criteria, or whether it's going to, you know, influence the criteria you have to consider for a master plan amendment, or whether it is a required submission as part of a master plan amendment under the, under the UDO criteria or the development agreement's criteria. I can't answer that off the top of my head. I would think that you are within your discretion if the Planning Commission should decide and send the best interest of the town and of the applications to, to ask for it. But that is, I mean, there, it does create some additional complexity about, okay, well, what sort of timeframe are you going to require? Is, you know, one year enough, two years? Is it 90 days prior to the application? Do they submit, they get it as they submit their application or advance the Planning Commission? And it really, the issue from an applicant's standpoint is, you know, when they're buying the development rights, they're buying with at least a reasonable degree of certainty that they are going to be able to develop this many units. Again, the, there is the criteria that says school, that defines your public services and includes school. So, it's, as I mentioned last month, I, I think that there's a substantial amount of leeway for the town on this particular issue, but I will leave it to the, I mean, obviously the Planning Commission, I think y'all are well-versed enough in these types of applications and these type of issues to, to render a decision that's going to be mindful of both the town's needs, the school district's needs, and the, you know, the impact on the developers.
Everybody's asked all the questions I was going to ask.
All I would say is, is five years is a drop in the bucket in my eyes for a development. So, I don't have a problem with five years on it, but I'm not, I can be swayed either way.
You're referring specifically to the school letter?
To the school district, well, to all the letters, to be honest with you. You know, if it was like, like the previous one, if it was 15 years ago, 20 years ago, then it's kind of like, let's get it updated. But that's, that's just my one opinion on this.
But it's like they're saying it's really hard when someone buys the development rights to something, and then you tell them they can't do it.
Well, I appreciate the consistency of the master plan with those service letters that coordinate, you know, correlate with that master plan.
We just know what this is.
It's highly predictable about where that's going to land.
We know what they're going to say.
But it's good to have.
But yes, it makes them have to keep saying it, and maybe they'll realize and do something.
And to me, there's, there's some benefit to that. The fact that we heard it from midpoint, if that's an issue with the school system, then let's keep talking about it. Let's keep having them bring it to the forefront so that it can be addressed. And again, it's not on you, it's not on parcel nine, it's on the Beaufort County school system.
Right, yeah, right. Okay, I have a motion. I want to pull back that screen, Dan. Thank you, John Paul.
Oh. Can I have a mention?
One question. So, what Kathleen was saying, is everybody, I agree with Charlie, a five years is fine. Do we want to add that on or not?
He wanted to have, because this is a recommendation to council, is for them to look further into, I don't know, how you would.
Request letters by the time it's submitted to council?
Just so that it's bringing it to the forefront again?
Yeah, if you would like to have, put as a, you know, a condition of your recommendation that updated service letters be provided in advance of the council, you can, you can do that. It's just, again, it's a timing situation, so.
I would also request if you're going to do anything. Request a request if you're doing anything.
It's really, again, y'all have tremendous flexibility, you can make the motion however you want and see, see how, I'm having a hard time, I usually can gauge which way y'all are leaning, but I can't, so I'm stalling.
That's what I wanted to ask, because that is just.
It's, it's the discretion of the person making the motion, because the motion can always be amended if the majority feels, so.
I have a tone up there.
Yeah, I was going to say, go ahead.
Hey, guys, Jared Cleveland, I'm with Pritchard Farms, a developer, and, you know, we thank y'all for considering this, and we really hope to get this project going. Just want to remind that it is in an already-approved PUD. The, the school has already said that they are obligated to provide school for the students. And, you know, we personally feel like this is a situation to be handled outside of our development. This is a major issue, and it, I don't know why we would be tied down with it, so, thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to recommend approval with staff recommend, or staff conditions as, as recommended by staff. That was unclear. The conditions recommended by staff, and also with the condition to provide proof of the request for updated service letters.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I think that's reasonable.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, Charlotte, you've been waiting all night. Mr. McCracken has too.
I've been waiting longer than tonight. Let me bring up the presentation.
Consideration of a resolution to approve an updated comprehensive plan for the town of Bluffton. Do you have any public comments on this one?
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you. I am pleased to bring forth a consideration of a resolution to recommend ordinance to Town Council to adopt an updated comprehensive plan for the town of Bluffton, known as Beaufort Bluffton. As you know, a comprehensive plan is required by state law.
It's intended to guide our policies related to development and redevelopment over a 10-year period of time. Our last update, full update, was 2007. We had a minor update back in 2014. So, this is time to do that full update of our plan, and it is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to oversee the process. There are 10 elements required by the state that you see here. They include anything from natural resources to the economy, to our cultural resources. As part of this process, we did a great deal of assessment and data collection, and I do want to say we were assisted by MKSK, our private consultant, who did a lot of this work, and they had subconsultants as well. So, there was a lot of review of the town's plans, both past, present plans, our strategic plans, plans that were done by the county, including the green print plan, as well as our bike and pedestrian plan. During the process of the update, there was the US census occurring in 2020, so that was a good opportunity to get the data from that time. Very interesting to see the 10-year period, the amount of population that was identified, roughly 28,000 people in 2020. As of July 2021, 2021, there was estimated to be approximately 32,000 people. So, really interesting to see that change. It included looking at our growth areas, and as you know, over the past 10 years, there's been a lot of growth to the western portion of town, so our growth framework map addresses this. The engagement process, unfortunately, was not what we had wanted it to be because this process began during COVID, during the pandemic, which required us to meet oftentimes virtually. There was a steering committee that was set up by council with 18 people, including Commissioner Delkor. Appreciate your. Appreciate your participation in that. We had, um, community roundtables, too, for each of our elements, ranging from any, you know, scientists we had, we had people who were working for local nonprofits. We had even high school students. It was interesting to get their perspective about the town through their eyes, things that we hadn't even considered. So that was very helpful. We did have a few community meetings. Again, just for whatever reason, weather, power averages, we couldn't meet. So we did the very best we could, and it's ironic that we have a hurricane watch tonight. So I have no idea what to expect for town council. But hopefully, it'll go off without a hitch. So again, we had surveys that were done. Most of our feedback from the community came through engagement surveys online. That was very helpful. Thank goodness we had technology to give us a hand with that. Based on the outreach between the community and between our stakeholder groups, we identified plan goals, which you would have seen in each of the elements. And basically, these are themes around which the plan was built. So the structure of the plan is, are the goals that I just mentioned. We identified objectives for each of those goals, and then various actions that would we, that would, we would undertake related to the goals. So for an example, our land use element, the goal is envision a more balanced Bluffton. And then one of the objectives that was identified was to improve the town's regulatory framework. There were like five or six actions related to this particular objective. In this case, one of them I just want to bring up was that we identified that we need to review the workforce and affordable housing requirements in our unified development ordinance, as they are not being used in the way we thought they might be. So there may be something that we can do there. The actions that were identified in the plan, there were 166 of them. I didn't realize that. They do vary in number by element. The one with the greatest number would be the resiliency element, and there was a lot of discussion around that one. We do think that that particular element does need some more work. As a town, we can determine whether or not we want to do some updates before our audit, would be in five years after the date of adoption. But we can do some additional work before that time if we feel it's needed. The actions, each of them will have a timeline associated with it, so we can prioritize which ones are most important. Some of them will be ongoing, and some of them will be more immediate, things that need to be done. One of our discussions during our various meetings that we had in July and August was whether or not the town was actually leading a particular action or whether it'd be advocating for it. So the consultant did put that in the role of the town, and I think that's very helpful. Additionally, with the actions or the potential partners that can assist us with making certain they come to fruition. I mentioned that we did a substantial review, or the planning commission did a very substantial review regarding the draft plan. And then we also had several members of the public who provided some very good comments that we took in account. So the next steps, if the resolution is approved today, it will go to town council on October 11th for a first reading. There is no public discussion at that time. That would be held on November 8th. And if it is approved on that date, it will take effect on November 8th. So the actions related to tonight's item is that you can approve the plan as submitted. You can suggest amendments to it, or you can deny it. And with that, here's a, a proposed motion here regarding the three options. Glad to answer any questions.
Okay, I'll open up to everybody, but just, I guess, thinking on a higher level of, are there things in this that are still of great concern or things that you want council to look at so that we can kind of give them some direction in your recommendations? Because I know we're not going to solve every solution tonight, so.
I have a couple of process questions before we get into the meat of the, and those high level of questions. One question I have was, I'm just in a hypothetical. I'm not saying this is what's gonna happen. If this were, this plan were denied today, what would be the impact of that?
The world would end.
First off, you're providing a recommendation, so.
Right, a recommendation for that. So nothing really, other than we just.
Highly advised that we did not get to that point. Um, and then we would take it back and readjust, and then bring it forward to where it could go through, so.
I will say this much, I'm getting more and more nervous the more time goes on, because the state law is that we're supposed to do this every 10 years with a review every five. The last time we did a full comp plan update was in 2007. And I think, I think what I'm hearing from staff and what I'm seeing, I'm not entirely thrilled with what the consultant came back with, but I think it's doable to the fact where we can start taking chunks of this and redo it in the upcoming year. And that's, that's where I'm kind of sitting with this. It's better than what we have now. What we have now is next to nothing. That's my thought.
And if I may jump in, I want to first say to Charlotte and staff, and to the commission, we have collectively spent a ton of time on this, and thank you for Charlotte and this commission who spent all those meetings trying to make this better. That said, as I mentioned to you, Charlotte, there's still some things from an action plan, looking at draft three, four, 3.0 to 4.0, that I would have liked to have seen. And as we talked yesterday, I am more than happy to write a note to you, to forward to council, to say, please think about these things going forward. So I'm kind of with Charlie. We've spent a lot of time. I think there's been a lot of good work and good thinking. I'm not sure I'd hire M S K again to do this, because I think they let you down a little bit, because there was more that they could have provided in their final product.
The other question I had, and I, I also would like to, Commissioner Delkor's comment to just thank you to staff. I mean, you guys have been busting your behinds on this, and it's notable, and it's appreciated, and we, I believe everybody here can see it. And so I want to make sure that while I come across with all my comments and opinions, I do, I want that to be, my appreciation for your hard work to be noted. The other question I had was, I know that there's contractual, you know, there's a contract associated with M K S K regarding this project. And I don't know if we're kind of like, are these additional services that, with all these extra meetings that we've had, or has this been all part of the additional contract? I know that there's a timeframe for when their contract is up. Are we, are we past that? Like, is, is there a 5.0 potentially before it goes to town council?
There will need to be, I've identified a few things that will need to be updated. But they have gone past their timeline, and they're right at their, their contract amount that they have agreed to do, to finalize this for us. They will not be making any more presentations. That will be the responsibility of staff moving forward. But we will identify whatever changes need to be made. We'll get the, the document from them as well, so that in the future, if we need to make changes, we can do that, we're not relying on M K S K to do that.
So if there was a, in that year-long process, if that was something, like, we really want to see a map of this and a map of that, that's something that you would have the tools to do to add to this document to start updating it at the conclusion of this?
If I can take these to a more positive note.
I was trying to be positive.
I like that, Kevin. Let's go, Kevin.
I think we have, we have a lot of great information and a great amount of policy items in this document to help move this town forward in the next 10 years. I always say, no, no document is perfect. No ordinance is perfect. Understand that. We've, we've been meeting with council members individually to talk to them about the, about this, and they see, they see all of the elements. They like a lot of the information that's in there. And it is a living document, so there's opportunities to make changes to it. I think our goal is to get this, get this approved. And then in a year, we kind of do an assessment to determine, you know, what's working, what's not working. If there's items that need to be addressed, we can address those. Anytime we can bring them, the planning commission, you know, one of your sole responsibilities is the comprehensive plan. So you've been doing a fantastic job through this process. We'll continue to work on it and refine it as necessary. We just want to make sure we can get this to council, get it approved, then start using it. So, so positive.
We do have a public comment.
Is everyone okay of a public comment? I think maybe Mr. McCracken. McCracken, would you like to come up? I think you're the only public comment, and so we'll hear you. Your name is on the wall, so.
Am I the only thing that's keeping you all here?
Nope.
I'm, uh, Madam Chairperson and members of commission. I'm Emmett McCracken. I live at 58 Stock Farm. I have three observations. One, and may help us 10 years from now when we gather back and redo this together. When we get to this point of a draft, it would be helpful if this draft, for example, would indicate a color code or line through or whatever method, the additions and deletions of the previous draft. If each of you know the additions and deletions that have been made, congratulations. I suspect most people do not. And short of a page-by-page comparison, it's a little frustrating. So I'm, I'm able, a person is able to track his own recommendations and see if they are living or dead, but we don't know what other people do and where they are. The second, apparently, the history slash cultural chapter was rewritten for reasons I don't quite grasp, but if that was going to be done, I think it would be helpful if you, if it were fed out to the population of those that might have been a little interested in the history of Bluffton and for comment. Right now, we've got a new rewrite, and as far as I can tell, a little public comment. Finally, Bluffton and the oyster. You can go to page 30 of the current draft, and there's a paragraph in there, and you can infer that the building of the Houlihan Bridge, the oyster business in Bluffton died shortly thereafter. I crossed the Houlihan Bridge for the first time in 1935, South Carolina bound, and my grandfather was running an oyster factory in Bluffton. And as far as I know, for the 87 years subsequent to that, the oyster business has been fairly vibrant and doable in the town of Bluffton. You would not know that if you looked at the comprehensive plan, and I think it is a shortfall. And it's something that, that can be corrected in no more than two, one or two good English sentences. Well, finally, is that, what does that mean?
All right, go ahead, go ahead. I'll allow you to have another.
My second, three minutes.
No, go ahead.
I wanted to thank Charlotte for her patience, and particularly in the early stages of this, and her early recognition of my marginal capability.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, just so you know, I made that, that first comment you had. I made the staff yesterday. It's like, it would really help if we could see.
I mean, it's, it makes it so much easier.
Okay.
I have one question, one thing. I also, being the newest probably member with Lydia, but would like to say, I think you've done a great job. I've been through this before. The staff here is unbelievable. I want you to know that. You've been through hurdles, you had roadblocks, you had it all thrown at you. And as Kevin just alluded to, we are under another hurricane event. I am, you know, proud to say that we moved here. I love learning the history of this. I really, really do, so. I think you did a good job, given, I know you can make changes to this. And I think everybody has input for it. And, you know, it's a working tool. That's all it is. And it's something to guide you, but I think it's well done, you know, so just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Charlotte, can we make sure Mr. Mayor McCracken's comments on the oysters are passed on to council?
Yes, sir.
Please.
I was gonna make a motion that included that.
Sounds like a good thing to do.
Well, are you, are you ready, Chair?
Sure, if you'd like to go ahead and make a motion.
I'd, I'd love to make a motion, because you guys have done such a, a lot of work with this, and I appreciate it. So I move to approve.
I'm sorry, real quick.
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing.
Yes.
This is a public hearing for our.
Is this a public hearing?
Paperwork we have in front of us. No? Okay. Okay, I just wanted, I saw the words "public hearing," so I didn't want to.
Where did you see the one?
Well, the agenda.
Oh, I'm reading off.
In the staff report, it says, "Planning Commission's Public Hearing and Recommendation." So as long as that's not correct, then that's good.
What have, what's on our recording?
May I?
And just, just for clarification, a, a public hearing does have to be held, but it has to be held by the town council.
Um, before you make your motion, there was, and I have discussed this with Charlotte, but I just want to make sure these comments get passed to town council. There's some specific word choices and ideology that have been included in this document that I think can be, the narrative can be shifted and massaged to be a little less loaded in terms of terminology. And I would appreciate if that is brought up and discussed with town council. If town, obviously, if town council does not deem it an issue or concern, that is obviously more than up to them. But I do, I would appreciate if there's, that some of those items were brought up before town council.
Try again. I move to approve with amendments a resolution to recommend an ordinance at town council to approve an updated comprehensive plan for the town of Bluffton. The amendments I am suggesting are just two. One is to provide some edits that Mayor McCracken suggested in the history. And number two, if there's any other changes to draft 4.0, that you identify what they are to us as you propose it to council.
All right, any further discussion? Did you add anything?
Well, I'm just curious, when you say that, you just want to see any, if there's a 5.0 version that goes to town council, you just want to make sure that the new draft gets sent to planning commission just for their edification?
I would like to see what gets sent to town council, yes. I would like to see, and I don't need the whole, you know.
Well, I would imagine what we have is getting sent to town council, correct?
I got the impression that you are gonna make some edits.
No, he's saying later on.
Oh, okay.
Later on, but then there's some just.
Cleanups?
Yes.
And, and I would just like to see what cleanups you're suggesting, and.
Some of them. Page numbers.
Okay. Never mind.
So they're gonna see the same thing that we're seeing?
Got it. Well, then, the only amendment that I would have is to reflect Mayor McCracken's text edits on the history.
Okay, now, was there anything else anybody else wanted to add in there? Did you have anything you wanted to add in there?
We have an issue.
One.
We have to amend it.
The resolution, yes. So the resolution does include a recital that says this, a public hearing was held on September 28th for, before the planning commission. And obviously, the, as we just discussed, the public hearing will take place at town council, so that one recital needs to be eliminated. But what we're looking for tonight is, under state law, y'all are required to pass a resolution, or, excuse me, pardon me, adopt a resolution recommending that town of Bluffton Town Council adopt the comprehensive plan via ordinance. And you can obviously modify the, some of the portions of the comprehensive plan if you feel like it's necessary. But ultimately, the resolution that was provided to y'all and is included in your package, I think it's the very last page, is what. I think it's the very last page, is what, kind of the base document we need to be working off of. So.
And since we're in a motion, though, we need to let it die.
Yes.
You can, you can let it die or we can amend it, whichever one you prefer.
Let's just let it die.
Okay.
Can I get a vote? Anybody? No. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, so let's restart.
Just, just. I move to approve a resolution to recommend.
If, if I may, be so bold, can I, can I make a comment and have y'all, because I think I know where we're trying to go and everybody I'm sure has things to do. So if I can.
Kevin.
I'll consider a motion to approve a resolution entitled a resolution for the Town of Bluffton Planning Commission to recommend adoption of the 2022 Town of Bluffton Comprehensive Plan known as, quote, Blueprint Bluffton, and quote, to Town Council, presented to the South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Plan Enabling Act of 1994. It's amended, as included within your Planning, Planning Commission package, subject to the modification that the final warehouse calls that discusses the publication of notice and the public hearing be removed from the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is this a bit, all in favor? That was really long. You lost. Okay. Yeah.
So moved.
That was, that was big.
Did we say aye?
We did all in favor.
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you, everyone.
That's it. Oh, yes, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, second. Anybody want to discuss it? All in favor? Aye. Thanks, everybody.